Hi, I'm Luke Drzinski.
I'm Jake Sullivan.
And I'm Kate Brunswick.
Catch us on GPS 19.
I usually do. I would like to call tonight's Groton Board of Education meeting to order. It is April 23rd and it's about 6:05. I am going to with pleasure read off the mission statement, which is teaching and learning. And the board goals is to provide dynamic rigorous curriculum, ensure effective and engaging instruction, and embrace excellent learning environments. Or environment, I'm sorry. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Legions? And Cindy, would you be willing to lead us?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um...
I was just mentioning that we got that email about...
Okay. Okay. So, um, we just, uh, Michael, excuse me, Michael. Sorry. Dr. Grineer, and I just got a notice that, and I don't have all the information, that actually our food service director was, uh...
Essentially selected as Connecticut Food Service Director of the Year.
But we're gonna make a big...
There's gonna be a dinner, so we'll go to the dinner and then we'll come back with the award and re-present.
So, and it was... So, it just came today?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, it just came today. All right, and so we're moving on to the comments from citizens. And this is the agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizen portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. I do not see anyone. All right, and so I am going to skip right down to the student representative report.
Good morning. Oh, not good morning, good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back from vacations.
Thank you. So, a couple of updates from the last meeting before we went on April break. On Thursday, Fitch had hosted a presentation by Chris Sandy called Choices Matter. He's been going around to schools all around the country to speak with especially high school students about choices that he had made in his life, both positive and negative that had an impact. He talked very significantly about his time and decision he decided when he was very young to drink and drive, and he ended up killing a passenger and going sent to prison. And through that, he told us his story and the outcome and him coming out, and it was very impactful. I think it was much different than a typical presentation where you hear statistics, which is very good to know, about drinking and driving and how many students, young people, adults get hurt, but hearing his story was very impactful for the students. So, since then, we've had great response from students and teachers as well. A couple of class council updates, the seniors. They'll be hosting a bake sale and drawstring bag sale this Wednesday, April 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 during parent teacher conferences at Fitch. Also, a Chili's fundraiser, in case you like Chili's in New London, that will be on Monday, April 30th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then they'll be hosting their last and final round of their custom candy fundraiser during the month of May, and then their last and final Applebee's fundraiser on Tuesday, May 8th, and that's from open to close, 11 to 12. And then juniors, they'll be hosting their first ever tag and vendor sale this Saturday on the 28th from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. They have tons of vendors coming, listing from Love Sick, Coastal Crab, 31 Bags, Lularoe, and much more. Also, junior prom is scheduled. It'll be on Saturday, May 19th, and it'll be at 7:00 p.m. in the Fitch gym. And then sophomores are doing class shirts, and then they're hosting a chocolate bar fundraiser right now, so, very fun. And then we also start our line of testing. So tomorrow is the practice PSAT for the 9th and 10th graders, and the 11th graders will be taking the in-school SAT. And then AP and IB testing is just around the corner, so AP testing starts on Monday, May 7th, and that'll run till the 18th of May. And then IB testing actually starts this Friday, and they'll run to the 18th as well. And then for anyone that's watching, and any parents or students that want to know the schedule, all of it's on the Fitch webpage.
Okay, Falcon Theater will be presenting their show, Anxiety Sucks, spelled S-U-X, on Thursday from, at 7:00 p.m., Thursday, April 26th to April 28th, which is Thursday to Saturday at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And then they are also doing a 1 o'clock show on Sunday. And then Core Plus is sponsoring another financial aid night. This is on May 8th at 6:30 p.m. in the Fitch auditorium. And a big month for the music department. They will have their spring, the band and jazz band will perform their spring concert on May, Thursday, Wednesday, May 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. in the Fitch auditorium. And then on May 4th, it is recital night at 6:30, but this time it is in the band room. And then they will have their, the fifth annual dinner dance fundraiser at 7:00 p.m. in the Fitch cafeteria. And pre-sale tickets for kids are $5, for adults $10, and then at the door it's $12 for adults and $7 for kids, and there also will be a basket raffle there. And then on May 24th, on May 23rd at 7:00 p.m., they will have their pops concert where all music ensembles will perform, and they will recognize the graduating seniors. And then some upcoming dates, on Thursday, May 24th, it is under, Underclassmen Awards at 6:30 p.m. in the auditorium. And then on Thursday, June 7th, it is the Honor Chords presentation for seniors at 6:30, also in the auditorium. And then on Thursday, June 24th, the following, 14th, thank you, it is the Senior Scholarship Night in the auditorium. So, very exciting stuff going on between now and the end of the school year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
How are the, some of the sports teams doing? I know the Aluminum Falcons, we get updates about that, but I was just curious about baseball, softball, lacrosse.
Baseball is six, five and two, or six and two, I can't remember, off the top of my head. They're doing very well. Softball is just the opposite, it's flip-flop, it's they're two and five. They also lost seven seniors, so that's a, after all, they lost...
And their coach.
Yeah, and their coach. So, uh, yeah. Track is two and O, boys and girls are both two and O. Lacrosse, I'm not sure off the top of my head, neither tennis, I'm not off the top of my head, so...
Lacrosse is doing well, several victories.
Good.
Tennis, half, half and half, I think.
And it would be wonderful if we could have all those dates you just rattled off to us, you know, on an email to us, so that we could have them all, Joan, you know, like, compiled for the board, so we keep them all straight, there's so much going on. Thank you.
So, did you, I missed the, the bump, the juniors had a fundraiser, is the first? I'm confused.
Vendor sale?
Vendors, that's it.
The vendor slash tag sale. They also will take any tag sale donation items.
Okay.
Before Saturday, so you can just drop them off in the school and somebody will pick them up if you have any things. Any other questions?
Is that open to the public?
Yes, open to the public.
Excellent.
Did you notice how happy Cindy was when she's talking about all the test...
Senior.
There's one in every crowd.
Oh, yay. All right, so we're gonna be moving on to the superintendent and administration reports, so I'll let you take it from here, Dr. Grineer.
Sure, thank you. Well, the first thing is, the Alliance update is frustratingly, we're not getting much information. We were assured, I guess it was in November, late November, early December, that the State Department of Education had allocated $600,000. I call on a pretty much every other day basis, and we have yet to contact anyone who is willing... I know the commissioner was hoping to allocate funds from, I think it's called the Commissioner's Network School, and she learned that that was not legal to do it for an Alliance school district. So they said basically that they would have to allocate the money from some other source, and we keep calling. Mrs. Austin very patiently asked me every day, have I heard? Because we're trying to buy the books and, you know, and all the things that we were... And we learned today from Ken's staff that May 10th is the typical deadline for drawing down grants, so we haven't even gotten it yet, never mind drawing it down. So, we're entering into a little bit of trepidation there. As Cindy said, the other, associated with Alliance is our statewide testing. So tomorrow, as Cindy said, Dan, that involves you, I assume, right? So all the, all the juniors will take the SAT, every single junior will take the SAT exam tomorrow, the verbal and the math portion of it, and that will be the high school statewide test, that's what we use in Connecticut. And then starting next week through the end of May, the elementary and the middle schools will administer the S-Back, the Smarter Balance Alliance Consortium testing. So, and of course, those results will come to us probably in July or so. So, that's it for me. When Stan gives his report, I can maybe chime in a little bit. There was some concern about water quality that some of you may have heard about, but I know Ms. Austin has been working diligently with our math staff, and as she's getting ready, I would, I would just say, the math data you're gonna see tonight is, doesn't exclusively focus on algebra, but algebra is often considered the gateway class for graduation. That is to say, when students don't pass algebra, they tend not to graduate from high school. I mean, they can fail a lot of different things, but when they, they failed English once, but they still graduate from high school. They failed biology once, they still graduate. But when they fail algebra, it tends to be a gateway, and so I think you're gonna see some results here that will make you very pleased, because we've, Susan and the math folks have worked really hard on this, and I think she's got a nice presentation there.
So, I was able to meet with the math task force this afternoon. We meet every single month, and I was reviewing this data that I'm gonna be showing you with them, and they were talking about how we're collecting data now and how we're ensuring that kids are ready for the SAT, since they all have to take the SAT. Matt Brown talked about the PSAT, so I've got a slide in here on that as well. PSAT is given in the fall to 9th graders, and it's an 8, 9 PSAT, and then given to the 10th and 11th graders, and then they also do a check in the spring, so it's almost like getting a pre and a post test, and it's standardized, so it's a great measure to take a look at. We've actually talked about, is it something that we want to give in 8th grade, to our 8th graders as well, because of the standardization? There's also been research that shows that S-Back is very much aligned to SAT, so that we know that children who perform well on an S-Back test in middle school tend to perform really well on the SAT, so that's good information to have from the state. We've done a lot of work, the math task force, they really, there were a couple of members that really wanted to be here, but because of other things happening in the spring, they weren't able to join me. They wanted you to know that by having all the curriculum work and looking at that model algebra curriculum this summer, and continuing to work collegially to refine not only the instructional practices, but also the common assessments, has been very helpful, and they plan to do some of that work this summer. They're using that as a model for the Algebra II and for the geometry. The decision was made that both Algebra I at the middle school and at the high school would contain six of the eight units, so that they could go into depth. As Dr. Grineer said, oftentimes algebra is considered kind of the gateway, but it's really, as a mathematician myself and a math teacher, I know that really all of our work fundamentally is getting kids ready for algebraic thinking, which is making generalizations, and using what they know to solve the unknown. So it's really important that systematically, in our district, K through 12, we have programs in place, and we're following the Connecticut Core Standards, and we have delivery systems in place that really have inquiry and really rigor and relevance for kids, so that they see the importance of algebra. So this slideshow really talks about kids getting ready for algebra, so it includes the middle school mathematics, and it includes the high school data, and I wanted to kind of show you, just in a picture form... I charted out the data. If you look at the red line, that's the high school data. Now, remember that this is the first year that it's really a college-level course at both the middle school and the high school. It's completely aligned from instructional materials to common assessments, and these are really the grades of the kids. Take an end year for each of the years, 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, and to date, so we'll also take a look after their finals, too, to check, to see how they're doing. And it's, you know, looking at how they're really actually getting closer, one of the things they wanted me to tell you is that, remember that Fitch High School in 1415 did not have, did have the basic course. So the number that you see, that 77%, looks high, but it's not including kids who are in something that was called other than algebra. So a lot of kids were not taking the Algebra I that we know today. So it eliminated, you know, the opportunity for kids. And then we put kids in college level, we gave them support, but you see that we did take a little implementation dip, but it looks really good that it's coming along, and that without having a basic class, with having college level, the kids are doing really quite well. Interesting how well the high school, how well the middle school. And now the middle school data shows you pre-algebra data, and kids taking pre-algebra even in 7th grade and in 8th grade. It also shows you the Algebra I data and Algebra II. And I also meant to tell you that the two algebras, Algebra I and II, are combined in that graph as well for the high school. So, you know, we will continue to take a close look at this. The real goal is to, to make sure that we have these common assessments, because grades are grades, people grade differently, so we're really trying to make that a more standardized process, looking at how much homework counts, you know, looking at these unit assessments alone, to see, these common unit assessments alone, to see if there are any discrepancies. I find that with the grants that we have, they really keep you true to form by having you do all this analysis. Everything from data that could be more subjective, to more objective, to looking at enrollment data, so looking at the numbers of students taking the higher level courses, which will all be, you know, part of this project that we have going on, in looking at children and their growth in mathematics and their proficiency. So I had given you the chart that we had with the current data to date from 1718, and you see Fitch is broken out, we have kind of an average of it, and we have the Algebra I and Algebra II, and then you have the data for the middle schools averaged together, you see Cutler, you see Westside, and it shows all of the different courses that they're taking. So you could just look at Algebra I, for instance, in the 8th grade at Cutler, compared to Algebra I in the 8th grade at Westside, and do some comparative data. We wanted to see how many kids were getting As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs, because there's a concern, it's actual, a national concern, a regional concern. We've been analyzing it in my networking group with assistant superintendents through LEARN, that students, you know, oftentimes, who, students who fail algebra oftentimes will drop out, and so it's a real concern, and we want to see measured success in algebra, because we feel it'll be measured success overall in high school. And we noticed in our data, looking at it as a region, that middle school children tend to do much better in the algebra than the high school, even though it's the same course, it's a college-level course, but they're advanced in their mathematics. And the hope is that, you know, they can have the credit reported on their high school transcript, but ultimately, they are able then to take an honors course right out of the bat in 9th grade, and tend to take, will take the four years, and get into a calculus I or II, they sometimes even double up in mathematics, take IP, IB, and AP courses, too. So we feel like it just gives them a lot more opportunities if they're able to take algebra in the middle school, and have the desire for that. And so it goes through each of the years, 16, 17, and one of our board members did point out a number error that I'm gonna go back and check. It looks like they, the data came from Power School, and so it looks like there might have been an issue, but I will look into that. But I think ultimately, the, the progress that you see in the graph is the measured progress, it's not gonna affect that. And then this was the very first year that I was able to collect the data. In talking to Matt Brown, he said, make sure you realize about the PSAT information, and if you look at our current freshmen, their average score on 9th grade PSAT was a 433. Last year's 9th grader was a 420, so we see measured growth in the PSAT. And then we look at the percentage, and Fitch High School is at a 44, where the state benchmark is 37. The sophomores also, Fitch, the benchmark is higher than the state average in 9th grade PSAT, and if you go down to the junior class, they were right neck and neck with the state benchmark. And you see also that our kids over time, like current sophomores from 9th grade were at a 420, and in 10th grade are at a 452. So we like to see the growth, we like to see them improve. And what happens at a building base is that we drill down, and we look at this student by student to see about their progress. And then just some next steps, when we look at student growth and achievement. Like I said, this is a K-12, actually, you know, study, but in looking at the algebra and the readiness for algebra, we have aligned the course. You saw Caitlin Kennedy and Mark Master Joseph present to the board early in the fall, and they talked about the work they had done this summer, and how they had taken what our written curriculum was, which was from the state common core standards, and they were able to create a dashboard and create these common assessments, and they're going back to revisit those, getting input from staff, and even making it better. Algebra II and geometry courses were, have been modeled like the Algebra I, and will have the same dashboard and common assessments as well, and so there's a team of teachers who will be working on that this summer. Pre-algebra in the middle school is where we're gonna go next, to look at really the readiness for algebra, and it will go under Curriculum Review this summer, and then we're gonna do a full review of 6 through 8. We've had professional development, thanks to the Department of Defense Education Activity Grant in mathematics, and ongoing training, elementary, middle, and high school, but mostly the focus has been middle school and high school around algebra this year. So through the new perspectives and the Connected Math Project, we've had embedded PD going on, and workshops, and teachers really learning more approaches to delivering the curriculum through inquiry, through relevant problem solving, and really trying to make sense of it, like algebra, what's it all about? Will I ever use it? Was kind of the common thing that we used to say. And so now we're really trying to give kids, for instances, on how, you know, they see it in real-life application, how algebra is so useful. And middle school mathematics is so useful, we still use it today, percents, ratios, proportions, all that stuff. So, any questions?
Gretchen.
I have a great concern, because we are sending a message in how we word this to our students, and how we present this to the people of our district. There are many very bright children who are not math savvy, and if we send them the message that they are struggling in Algebra I, and struggling in Algebra II, that they're gonna be, they're not gonna go to college, they're gonna be failures. So how we present this, how we word this is very, very important, because those students are already sensitive to the fact that they are not as good in math, so we really need to be very careful that we don't go, hey, you got a C minus in algebra.
Well, that's, that's the problem right there, is that too many children have failed algebra, and all children need to have a course in algebra, in algebraic thinking, and need to feel that success. So that's why it needs to start in kindergarten, when they're very young.
I completely agree, but we need to make sure we're not sending the message, you're bad in math, you're going to be a failure. We need to, we care, how we can say this...
Well, I think the data speaks volumes.
In a less abrupt manner.
If you look at it, the kids in middle school, when you look at kids in middle school, that's all of our kids, are achieving at really high levels.
I think that's wonderful. We just really need to work. It's, it's the wording that I'm concerned about, because it sends a message to the kids, and there are a lot of them that do struggle, I just want to make sure we work on the message we're sending.
I guess for Gretchen, I didn't hear the message that we think that if you struggle that you're not smart, or that you can't succeed. I didn't, I didn't hear that message.
Okay, she said, if you fail Algebra I, it is a distinct likelihood you're not going to graduate from high school.
No, I think, I think what I heard, and I'll ask Susan to, to sort of do that, but I think that what she's saying is there's a correlation in the research about algebra.
Correlation or not, we need to be careful how we present it to the students.
I will, I will, I will take that message. Any other, any other, Rita?
Susan, this, the chart that you gave us with, for proficiency, what is above proficiency on the S-Back scoring now?
So each grade level has a different number for...
No, I'm saying, but there's proficiency, but isn't there then the other two levels above proficiency, still with S-Back?
There's four levels.
Four levels.
So you have, I think they call it approaching...
Right.
And then, well, there's something before approaching, not approaching, approaching, proficiency, and then goal.
Goal. So what I'd like to see is this done with goal, not proficiency.
So what proficiency is here is when children get As, Bs, and Cs. It doesn't even include Ds, passing.
No, I'm talking about the chart that you did for us with proficiency. I'd like to see how many children are actually meeting goal, and how many are just proficient. That's, I'm talking about just this, this chart.
Right. I was gonna ask the exact same question. The word proficiency, if I understand, means the number of children, percentage of children who got an A, B, or C.
Exactly.
It's not what you're thinking.
It's not S-Back.
It's, it's...
This is S-Back?
No, it isn't.
No, you're not...
These are grades. Scratch out proficiency and put down A, Bs, or C.
Okay, so, but could we have this chart done with how many students are at goal?
When we get the S-Back, sure.
Yeah. When we get the report?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think I have shown you that, too, with the S-Back scores. This is just really their work in the classroom.
And I'm really confused with like, a lot of these, especially the 8th grade numbers across the board from year to year, there's... across the board from year to year, there seems to be fewer students, especially at Cutler, taking Algebra One and Algebra Two. And it, the numbers just don't seem to add up to me. So I, I'm not sure why, but from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen, all the way till now, there are, there are fewer students taking in eighth grade Algebra One and Algebra Two. And I don't know why.
Well, Algebra One, we've actually seen an increase of students taking Algebra One. But in Algebra Two, we found that at, when we first started presenting Algebra Two to our middle schoolers, there was a small handful of students who were really ready for that. Then we had increasing numbers. And what happened was they missed out on middle school mathematics, which was so important. And it kind of caught up with them later on. So we kind of slowed that down, that process. There still will be a handful of students who might take an Algebra Two in the middle school. But the number is less than it used to be. There was a point where there were a lot.
Algebra Two, because I'm not even sure that should be being taught in our middle schools. What I'm saying is last year at Cutler, Algebra One, eighth grade, there were sixty-two students that took it. Forty-five took Algebra Two. This, this year, this past year, only fifty-one took it and thirty-six are taking. So the numbers are decreasing. And I, and I, that doesn't seem to make sense to me. And, and it's, it's probably, it's the same at, at Westside for eighth grade. So I just think that that's something we should look into. Why, why is that? Why, why are there fewer students taking?
There are two classes of eighth-grade Algebra at both schools.
Algebra One or Algebra Two?
Algebra One.
Algebra One. But there are fewer students, according to this chart, taking.
So it looks like you have two classes of about twenty-five, according to this chart, twenty-four.
Right. But the year before, were there three classes with sixty-two students taking it? Or were they all just swished in somehow? I remember when, especially my son was at Cutler, and there were like thirty-two kids. They were sitting all over the place. There were not even enough desks for everybody to sit. They had two classes, but, so it just seems to me that the numbers are decreasing.
You're right.
Well, I'm sure the numbers of total students have decreased too.
Well, that may, that may be, I thought about that. I think the eighth-grade class, like, one hundred and forty kids each school. But we'll look into it.
Last year was the same.
Yeah. I mean, her point is, is that if there's, there's a sharp decrease. And so is there, is there a criteria different or lower amount of kids?
Something's changed. I, I...
Yeah, well, we'll look into it.
I can check the numbers with them. I've had all the principals look it over, but I'll check again. Yep.
Katrina.
Can you tell me last year, or what year, the Algebra One at the middle school became, became equivalent with the Algebra One at the high school?
This year.
Okay, thank you.
This year was the first year that we rolled out Common Assessments and we rolled out the dashboard and, you know, provided professional development. And in the past, we thought we had Common Assessments, but they weren't so common. So that's what we found out.
So maybe that's part of the difference. Thank you.
And that could happen from classroom to classroom next door at the high school or middle school. But now, we really feel pretty certain that we've got a good game plan.
Any other questions about the math data? Hearing none, we can go to the business man, oh, Gretchen?
I was just going to ask, so we're now doing like supposedly freshman, sophomore, Algebra One, Algebra Two, junior year, Geometry. Is that how it goes?
Typically, in middle, in high school, Algebra One, then Geometry, Algebra Two.
That's why it's...
But if a child has taken Advanced Mathematics and have taken Algebra One in the middle school, they tend to take Algebra Two the next year, and Honors Algebra Two, and then Geometry. The whole point is that the SAT is really based on the Algebras. So you want them to have also instruction in Algebra closer to the SAT and using the Algebra or Advanced Mathematics so that kids are really ready too for that SAT test, so.
Jay.
This is why I like to see these figures a little bit advanced so we can study them for a little bit longer because I'm not a quick read. So, but as I'm looking at fifteen, sixteen, if you actually add Algebra One and Two together, we got a hundred and five. And then if you look at sixteen, seventeen, it's a hundred and nine. So it looks like we're actually gaining in the Algebra Two classes. So the number of students in Algebra is the same, but we're actually gaining in the Algebra Two.
And that was that group when it kind of, it amplified in Algebra Two. And so we are now, it's slowing down. So there was that kind of high point where you did have more students taking Algebra Two in the middle school.
Please.
I do think it's very interesting to me, and I like seeing this, that by taking Algebra One in eighth grade, that they're better able to learn it than if they did it in their freshman year. I find that amazing to me. I think it's great.
Well, and I think that you'll see when we really are able to adjust instruction and curriculum, you know, and make it more available for kids starting very young, that you're going to continue to see this kind of growth. And I wouldn't be surprised because in other districts that I've been in and led math, we've seen really enormous amount of students taking the eighth-grade Algebra. And then you see things like Calculus Two, and more girls taking Calculus Two, and you see other high-level mathematics. So it's a real continuum. It's a K-12, you know, project.
And more girls. Yes. Doctor, can you?
I, I just wanted to verify my institute colleague's observation, Mr. Whitehall. I did the math also, and you're right. I have a hundred and nine students taking Algebra One or Algebra Two in sixteen, seventeen. A hundred at Cutler, a hundred and eleven at, at Westside. And then, the year before that was fifteen, sixteen, a hundred and five in, in both schools. So it's sort of, it's, it's, and of course, I think the demographics, one of them, I think the eighth-grade class was, was smaller this year. But yeah, that's a, that's a trend, you're right. We're seeing, we're not, by the way, we're not entirely sure that taking Algebra Two in eighth grade is necessarily, I, I, I speak as a grandfather who has experienced this phenomenon. And it's, it's tough. It's, it's, it's tough to walk out of that middle school and to go right into Geometry and Precal or whatever. So actually, I think the, the math folks are wise. We're, we're trying to, to Gretchen's point, we're trying to make a very strong Algebra foundation and then allow them to go on to Algebra Two. Algebra Two as a ninth grader, or Geometry as a ninth grader is, I think is a better option. So we're, we're really trying to beef up the, the Algebra experience for the kids.
Gretchen.
I do believe, last fall or possibly last spring, our math guy came in and has several times said that he sees much better results with Geometry later than earlier. That the month sort of works better in Algebra early and, and then Geometry later.
Yeah, he, he's a big believer in that.
Yeah.
He needs to develop that thing.
And I, I agree, I do agree with that.
Yeah, no, I...
And trigonometry is also another one of those magic maths, I thought. Because all those math made sense to me to tell that.
All right. Anything else? Then let's go to the business managers' reports. Hello, Mr. Ken.
Hello.
How are you?
Very good.
Good to see you.
So everyone should have a Object Code summary for FY18, yellow banner on the top. This is based upon the approved budget of seventy-six million, four sixty-eight, two thirty-nine. We are currently projected to be under budget by two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight fifty-seven. The drivers for this difference is similar to in prior, prior periods. In salaries, we're, we're seeing under budget of seven hundred and three thousand. It's line eight. Line eleven, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, under bu, over budget, sorry, for benefits. And then the other driver is some savings in the tuition line of four hundred and fifty-four, oh twenty-three. That's line thirty-six. We did get informed this morning that there is another student coming into the district, so this will be changing. But luckily, we're near the end of the, end of the year, so there shouldn't be a large impact on that.
On this budget? Any questions about the Object Code?
So are yours, according to the Object Code, that, that's not a, that, so we're down about ten thousand dollars? Is that...
I'm sorry, for which one, which line?
Is that what, is that what you're saying on line fifty-eight?
Line fifty-eight, we're two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight fifty-seven.
To the good.
Under budget.
Rita, what you're looking at is line fifty-six? That, that's the subtotal for the equipment line?
Okay, so the grand total is, we're almost three thousand plus.
Three hundred thousand plus.
That's like half of a teacher. That's how I think of it, right? A beginning teacher.
No, no.
We're two hundred and ninety-four thousand to the good.
Two hundred and ninety-four.
Two ninety-four, yes.
So what is that, three, that's almost three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, thank God.
So he just went through that.
Yeah.
So we have, so decrease...
So what are we going to do with that?
Oh, well, what we're going to do with that, it, it would appear, my recommendation is going to be, when the RTM finally finishes with our budget, the board is going to have to obviously make some adjustments, like one point eight million. So one of, well, my primary recommendation is that we would take that, pretty much that entire sum, and use it to offset supplies and so forth for next year. So it will mitigate the, the cut from, from next year.
However, see if I've been taught well by my business managers, is, is that this is a, this is a number that's in the end of April. We have all of May and up until July first to close out our books.
Correct, yeah.
So the thought that it stays at, I love your positive thinking, that, that this number...
You're right, you're right.
That this number that's close to three hundred thousand is not going to stay there. Okay.
Very possibly.
Jay.
I have to mention the asterisk earlier in the meeting that we may not be getting the alliance.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, you know, I, I have a verbal commitment from the, I, I have no reason to doubt. I'm, I'm getting nervous with the timeline, but first, one official told me that we were going to get the six hundred thousand. I verified it with that official. Then I called the Chief Financial Officer for the state, and she, about three weeks ago, confirmed, yep, that the money is coming. So I have no, no doubt about that. Our concern is allocating it appropriately, making sure we draw it down.
In time.
Yeah, that gets a little dicey.
Yeah.
And we were told it had to be spent by June twenty-fifth or at the end of June.
June third.
So, and there's a lot that goes into that alliance work and the document and the tracker of all the initiatives we were trying to accomplish this year, so.
So what are you saying?
So I'm saying it's going to be hard to accomplish a year's worth of work in two months or a month.
Sorry.
But the work will be there for next year, for sure.
I don't mean to make a big, huge pause, but that, that I guess, I just, I think that that, I feel that frustration around that, but I'm sure everyone here does as well. Jay, did you have anything else?
I know.
Okay. Rosemary.
I'm trying to understand the drawdown date is May tenth.
Well, the normal drawdown date for state and federal grants, because of the accounting, the normal accounting procedure.
And we haven't heard that we're getting this...
We haven't been, we haven't been given the go-ahead for the drawdown yet.
So what happens on May eleventh?
Well, notice I said, "normal grants." I, I don't think this is a normal grant, so if, if we don't have it on May eleventh and we get it on May twelfth, we will. We know exactly, Susan has identified the books and the equipment and the whole...
So we're still getting the six hundred thousand?
I have every confidence that we're getting it.
Do I have to bless myself?
Yeah, well, you probably should.
So I just told staff, "Ready to mail."
In the mail-in.
Any other questions about that before we move on to the Health Reserve? Hearing none? You're still on. Mr. Mike?
So we don't, at this point, have an updated health insurance claims report for the month of March. I would anticipate we'll get that mid to late this week, so timing is just a little off. But what I did provide, if, it should be a piece of paper, looks like this, called the Health Insurance Reserve, big box on it. And I just wanted to help give some clarity to our Health Insurance Reserve. We talked about it a number of times as we've gone through the budgeting process. And I guess I just wanted to go over it and make sure you understood where this year is going to end up. This first column, the top of it says, "Six thirty, twenty-seventeen." These are numbers that have been confirmed by the town. Our total health insurance reserve is five point nine million dollars. We have to put aside for the corridor twenty-five percent of our expected claims. This expected claims number, it, it does change as, as Anthem reruns our renewal, that this number can and does change. But as of the last renewal that they ran, which was in February, twelve million, eight fifty, means we need to put aside three point two million dollars for the corridor, meaning our net health insurance reserve is two point seven million dollars. That's the number that we've talked about a couple of times. I made an assumption in order to roll this forward so we could understand where six thirty, twenty-eighteen is going to end up. And if, if we make an assumption, and it's just an assumption, that we, that our claims come in at ninety-five percent of our budgeted claims, I anticipate that we're going to need to use three hundred and sixty-one thousand of our reserve. That's what that, that middle column is. So based upon that, our projected six thirty, twenty-eighteen, health insurance reserve in total be about five point six million dollars. And assuming that the corridor doesn't change, that means our net health insurance reserve two point three, between two point three, two point four million dollars. So that's, that's where we start the year from, based upon these assumptions.
Start the year, starting July first, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen?
Correct.
Sorry, I'm just making sure that I understand.
This is confusing, just to get this right.
So if I can weigh in a little bit, we, we know, I'm just going to say something that totally went out of my mind. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Ken has made an assumption that, you know how we have our, our normal chart? And the reason the chart is not here, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, is because the fourth Monday fell on a relatively early date of twenty-three. There's, there's another Monday available, so I, I bet you we'll get the report in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, April. And that, that will give us a, a much better handle. But Ken has made the assumption, you'll notice, the first asterisk on there, assuming ninety-five percent of the budget is, is going to be used up, plus, plus a OPEP. So we're saying our claims are going to come in at about ninety-five percent, and we're going to pay the whole OPEP thing. If you look at that compared to last year, that, that would be a very conservative estimate. We, we came in lower than that last year. We came in at about eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six percent.
Yeah, Laurie and I did take another look at that.
Yeah, oh, good.
And, well, we weren't comparing, last February, February claims, we weren't comparing against our budget. We were comparing against the Anthem Expected.
Okay.
So if we actually go to Anthem, I mean, sorry, our budgeted numbers for February, we're actually not, not that good. So I apologize that I gave you misinformation this morning. We are actually, last, last February through February twenty-seventeen, we were at a hundred and six percent of, of budgeted claims. So we were, we were trending much higher... So we were, we were trending much higher to budget than we are now.
Okay.
And we ended up the year at 112% of budgeted claims, so, so we, we ran over.
Okay, last year we were 112.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the numbers we give you were, were against the, the Anthem estimate, so I apologize.
So, in this February, it spiked in January, but if memory serves me correct, it came down in February.
Yes, yeah.
So that's why March is so important, we, we need, we need to see March.
Yeah.
So, as we were about to say, and thanks for clarifying that, because I don't wanna be overly confident, 95% were, if, if that's the way it works out, then everything you see here, we'd have about 2.3 million. If, if March comes in and it's worse than that, then, if it, if it spikes again, then 95% probably is not a good guess, we, we probably ought to be shooting for perhaps 110%. And what would be, what's, what's 10% of?
Oh, every, every 1% is 115, so 10% would be a million.
A million, okay.
That gives you, yeah, the, the range of where this could end up. I mean, as we get further along, we're, we're 87.5% of budgeted claims as of this February. So, you know, as you go through the year, you get more confident because you have more reality behind you instead of a projection ahead of you.
Well, needless to say, as soon as we get that report, I will forward it to you, and we'll, we'll do another, maybe we'll take another look at that 95% and see how comfortable you and Laurie are.
Yeah.
Jay?
So, this projection mentions corridor. The, the 5.9 million is just the reserve?
It's, it's the total Board of Ed reserve for health insurance.
No, reserve plus corridor.
Oh, plus the corridor?
Yeah.
Is the 5.9?
5.9, yes. When we say reserve, we mean 25% of corridor reserve, and then the health reserve.
Yeah, it might be easy to think of it as reserve and net reserve, or something just a.
I see, so that's why you're taking 25%.
That's by law.
Out.
That's right, we have to have.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I, I always assumed that the corridor was sitting in its own account, 25% of.
Right.
So they're lumping it all together to reach the 5.9?
That's it.
Okay.
And that was a concern of, of, of the town, that sometimes we say these numbers, we, we talk about this net number, what they're really thinking about is that total number, and so when we talk about that, that confuses things sometimes, so.
Right.
This is just an attempt to clarify that.
Okay, so the corridor is not a snapshot that we're taking at the beginning of the year, it's moving.
It moves.
A moving target throughout the, the year as well.
If, if the claims go up, the corridor goes up, claim go down, the corridor goes down.
Mm-hmm. I've just never seen it presented like this before.
Yeah, no, it, this, this.
Do you find this helpful?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Katrina?
What is the OPEB amount?
OPEB amount for this year was?
786, I think, was it?
786 is next year's expected, this year was, it was 9?
911.
11, that's the number, yep.
I have no numbers.
Names and numbers, Scott.
So, the budgeted claims plus OPEB, what is that amount? The plus OPEB, is that the, the 9/11?
Yes, the 9/11, plus, plus 95% of, of those claims, the, the claim sheet that we, that we typically look at.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, that this number includes, includes everything, basically.
Okay. So your net Health Insurance Reserve is after the 9/11 has been taken out, okay.
Can I attempt to clarify, 'cause I, if, if I don't say this out loud, I'll go on with the wrong information? All right, so what, what you have found out is, is that the town, we even, we ourselves have been confused, and we have confused the town, because we kinda consider the corridor and our reserve as almost as sense two separate entities.
Correct.
And so the town has always used that, and I'm gonna use the example of the 5, the 5-9, and what you did was to show us that, that 5-9 includes everything, but we have to take 25% out, and that's considered our net?
Yes.
Okay, so now I, I'll use the word "net" instead of "corridor."
It might help.
It might help.
Safety net.
Safety net, oh, that is very good. So if I can understand, is that you're considering that if that 5, 5-9, is, is that, that the, the thing that we, what we could play with, not that we would play with it, but is that, is that on the first column on the left is a 2.7, but your, your estimation is that it's actually gonna be down to like 2, 2.3, if it goes to 95%?
That's right, yep.
Because we have to pay.
Okay, so I do now understand it, it's a one lump thing, you take 25% off, and then that's what the net is.
Yes.
I can be taught. All right, any other, oh, Jay, sorry.
So, so just to clarify, the 12,850,028?
Yes.
Is what MDG projects claims to be as of 630, but the snapshot was taken on 216?
It's, it's, it's a report we received on 216, it's actually Anthem numbers that MDG just puts in a, in a format, they, they break it out between town and, and board, and it's, it's a snapshot from a little bit earlier, this is the date of the report, but it's basically a 12-month look forward, as this is what we anticipate claims to be.
You're right, that's what they anticipate we're gonna pay this year.
At the, by the end of the year, but they just took the snapshot then, do they take the snapshot any, do they take it monthly, or?
No, no, actually, they, they only take it when we instruct them, it, we go, every year we go through a renewal, so we're looking forward, we wanna see what that next 12-month period is gonna look like. They will typically do it, I guess it's, it's, it's a fair amount of work, you could do it just once, this was actually our second time, we're having to do it one more time, so we'll have it three times this year. So it, it changes, but not, not every month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Hearing none, let's move on to the Director of Building and Grounds. I do believe that underneath there, we're gonna have a conversation about the water, the timetable, but you probably wanna share with us what's happening with the Grotton 2020?
I'll give you a lowdown on Grotton 2020 first.
Give me some data.
Good evening, so, since our, since our last meeting, Rick Norris and I joined the architects, along with estimators, to work on the budget up in their Glastonbury offices, and that's starting to get closer to the number that we need to be at, so that, that work continues. And as of today, Gary Schneider, Rick Norris, Arc, the two Arcadis reps, and Bob Austin LaFrance, who's the Chairman of the Permanent School Building Committee, we met today to develop a short list of four construction managers at risk, at risk for the two elementary schools, so we developed the, the list of four today, and they'll be interviewed shortly, I haven't, we, we haven't got a date for that, but that'll happen fairly soon to offer them the opportunity to interview with the committee. So that's what's going on with 2020.
Will there be a construction manager for each site, or one for both?
It, it, almost all of them would prefer, or put in a bid for both projects together, yeah. And, and the project manager for the middle school project also put in a bid for it too, so, it's possible.
Rita?
Yes, I don't know if I direct this to you or Dr. Guneer, has there been any further information from the state about the land swap?
No official further information.
So, is, is it in the Superior Court, where, where exactly does this stand?
I, I keep having to weigh what I've been told not to share, not, actually, not that I, not that I know all, all that much, but I, I think I could say, it, it is not yet in the Superior Court.
It's not?
Not yet.
Jay?
But the Town Council did modify the amount of?
Yes.
Land under easement now, right? They added?
They have officially added?
From the King property?
A, a good portion, 35 acres of the King property.
To? To the Boulder?
Addition, in addition to the Boulder property, and, and that's, that's the progress that is being made, that, that is in fact true.
So that's very positive then?
Oh, yeah.
Especially if we're going forward with the elementary school constructions.
That's one little footnote I can chime in, 'cause I, I don't know, a few parents, teachers, and principals are coming Wednesday afternoon, the 25th, and you're certainly invited to, to talk about the, the theme, we, we have about a dozen, the two principals, Susan and I, developed about a dozen themes, and we're gonna sort of explain that to, to the committee, and then ultimately try to get to a, a reasonable number that we would then do a community-wide survey. It's Wednesday, the 25th, at 4:00.
Will the themes also be the naming of the schools?
No.
Have anything to do with that?
Not, not, no, we're just, just, just the, actually, it's gonna be in Susan's office, just the themes themselves.
Okay. That'll have to happen soon, we have, because we have a middle school.
Once we get the theme, we say we have two committees, and then they'll, each separate committee can start working on the name.
Okay.
Sorry, back to you.
It's fine, so I'll continue on, you all have a copy of the timeline that Dr. Guneer and I put together this afternoon, in front of you, I believe, and this is on, you, you may recall, Ms. Austin and I.
It was sent to us today, I think, we don't have a copy, and I didn't see it today.
I didn't see it either.
I have it, I, I wasn't sure.
Okay, I thought I went to the board this afternoon.
Thought I sent it to everybody, no?
It was sent through email?
Yeah, I can, I can read it, if that's helpful.
I'll let you read it, and I'm just gonna get online.
Okay, so, here's, here's the timeline, as relates to, to water quality. In April of 16, you may remember, there was a nation, nationwide concern because of the problems in Flint, Michigan, and so we, not, not thinking we had a problem, we, we just decided to test all the water in, in all of our schools, and so Sam contacted Grotton Public Utility, and they, they conducted the, the test, and out of all the schools, 10 schools at, at that time, because Pleasant Valley was still operating, three sites, one, a, a room, an art room specifically at Pleasant Valley, one was a nurse's office, fountain spigot, I think, in, in the Claude Chester, and one water fountain in the business hallway at, at the high school. Those came back with, with levels that indicated there was too, too much light in, in the water. So what we did was, we, we, we closed off those water fountains and stopped having water distributed from them. In, in the case of Pleasant Valley Art Room and Nurse's Office at Claude Chester, we provided bottled water, and in the case of the high school, we just closed off that water fountain, so that no, no water was being dispensed from it. And then in the summer, you wanna talk a little bit about the summer, what, what happened in the summer of 16?
Yeah, during the summer of 16, one of the recommendations was to try and eliminate some of, some of the issues that might be from where it, well, first of all, the water that Grotton Utilities is supplying to us is, is fine, it's fine coming and leaving the plant, and also entering our buildings, so the issue is within our buildings. And so the idea was to go and, and get as many of the lead soldered fittings that are in line, out as many as we possibly could find, because there are lots that are behind walls and underslabs. So we spent a good part of the summer of 2016 doing that, taking some fittings out, and then on August 30th, we conducted a retest, and that retest showed that we still had the same, well, not the same numbers, but we still had elevated levels at Fitch High School and Pleasant Valley, and the Claude Chester levels were just below the action level. But it, it also is, it made Grotton Utilities, personnel and myself, a little uncomfortable to, in the nurse's office, especially where kids are coming in, maybe taking medicine, that sort of thing. So we continued to leave that secured, and continued as, with the bottled water at Claude Chester, and also at Pleasant Valley while that remained open. And then, so, actually, we didn't get the results on those tests until October of that year, and at that time, it was decided that we would submit plant, or, or request to the town for a CIP project. We got a, a budget number from an engineer of about $50,000 to do plans and specifications to work on the school's water issue, and so we submitted that to the C, to the planning department, and it didn't, didn't move forward, we, we actually got no money last year, or that year, in the CIP. And so throughout 16, 17, and up to this point, we've continued to provide bottled water at Claude Chester, it also, and, and that fountain at Fitch High School, in the 2000s wing, has remained off, and secured up to this point. And then with our, with our meeting with Dr. Guneer this afternoon, we've deci, we've decided that we're gonna continue, we'd already planned on doing some retesting this summer, but we're gonna move that up with the concerns that, that people have right now, we're gonna move that up, and I've, I met with Grotton Utilities, and also with Mystic Air on Friday, to, to make sure that we had plenty of people available to start testing, and we'll start in those two schools, in those two areas that tested positive first, so we'll do those two schools first, and move on throughout the rest of the district, and test all the buildings again.
Jay?
So, since we're talking about CIPs, for years, we've had CIPs for safety issues at Mary Morrison?
Yep.
Water issues in the schools, the condition of the tennis courts, where there's actually open holes in the asphalt, which pose a, a safety issue?
Yeah.
Which is used not only by the schools, but by the rec department, and also, for years, we've been asking for the football field. So these projects are being rejected at an administrative level in the planning department, before they even go to our Town Council?
In some cases, I blew this through.
And so the Town Council couldn't, if we made the case?
I, I don't know that that's true. Those particular projects that you mentioned, we've had other projects that have been set aside, probably in the planning department, but I don't really know whether those others were set aside by, maybe by the town, town, maybe the town, I don't wanna point fingers, but perhaps by the town manager, because I suspect that he's given marching orders by the Town Council with regard to how much money they're willing to put towards CIP projects, so he's looking at the entire town and seeing where that money can be spent, I believe, but I don't, I don't know that for a fact.
It just seems that we've decided there's safety issues after all these years, that our town officials should be able to consider the case, without it being, I didn't realize the town manager could, could just veto our requests, 'cause that's all it is, is a request, obviously, we don't have taxing authority, but I don't see how the, I don't understand how that can be quashed, and can the RTM, since we got zero this year in the, in the main budget, can we request that they restore CIPs, or is that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and that can't be vetoed by a administrator, or some?
No, the, the RTM can.
Not at that point, but, Jay, to your point, I, I actually think that that, you know, sometimes, in, in the past, we have kind of tried to find what agenda topics would be important for the Town Council and the Board of Education to have, and so it's in August that you're required to send in our CIPs for the upcoming year, is that correct?
It's pretty early on, yes.
So I'm actually wondering if in June, we should have a meeting with the, when we have a meeting with the Town Council, or actually?
Or that liaison.
Or the, or the liaison committee, which is actually gonna be in. Or the liaison committee, which is actually going to be implemented, that that probably would be a great place to have that conversation about why we feel that these CIPs are important and sort of what the historical thing is, thing. But that might be first to go through the Finance and Facilities Committee to kind of really, kind of hash out what are the CIPs, especially since August, we're gonna have to, we are gonna have to present them for the following year. So I guess that's coming up really quickly, given that it's the end of April. So that I'm actually wondering if it needs to kind of go to Finance and Facility pretty quickly to see what are those upcoming or future CIPs, plus the ones that we haven't been able to get past, so that you guys can get a handle of it, and then get it to the liaison and move it down the chain.
But I think even before that, that the RTM should be aware of these safety concerns.
Yep.
And make a decision, do they want the rec department and that to be using facilities that are potentially?
So I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, keep on putting my back to you guys. I got it, Katrina. I'm wondering if one of the things that we could then think about is, when we do our presentation before the public hearing to the RTM, is that we, that a large part of our, because many of the RTM members have gone, is that maybe we then do a large part about what's happening with the capital improvement plans and why the board tagged them as important safety issues and are people aware of that?
For years.
For years.
For years. These have been kicked down the, we've been, you know, we've been accused...
That's been a phrase that's been used.
A previous board, basically, has been accused of not maintaining our buildings with Fitch Middle, which is now miraculously opening with no upgrades as the Groton Community Center. We've been told we don't maintain our facilities. And now, for years, we've been saying we've got these issues, and they've been ignored. So the town's kicking the can.
Yep. Katrina?
Two years ago, I thought that we had gotten half the request for the Mary Morrison parking lot with the understanding that the town would do half of it. And there was not a surveyor? Have they hired a surveyor yet?
Greg Hanover contacted me last week and said that they're ready to move forward on that at this point.
Gloria Bay.
Gloria Bay.
Three years.
Rita, do you?
Yeah, I had a question about, I believe we talked about the tennis courts last year before the, I think it was in the summer before this, we were doing, presenting the CIPs. And we talked about going in with the Parks and Recs Department about the tennis courts, having them submit part of it, and then the Board of Ed, because it's so jointly used. Did that ever happen? Do you know if it's in their CIP?
It's not in their CIP.
It's not?
We did repairs on, my department just did repairs on the tennis courts to make them playable at this stage, but it's not an appropriate long-term fix for the tennis courts.
And in the, at Fitch High School, the football field, that, you know, you know, at the RTM meeting, it came up that it's also not safe. Has there, we talked for years about putting an artificial, some type of artificial surface on that. Would that be in the plans for the new middle school? Is there any funding for that, since we're talking about fields also there?
Well, not for a football field at the middle school. But there's, there, there is in the plan, a multi-surface field at this time.
Synthetic surface, but not a football stadium with lights.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about the field itself, that it came up at an RTM meeting that it was not safe, the football field.
Right, right.
So I'm just wondering.
Is there money in the big project for the football field?
No.
No?
Nothing.
Nothing for the, nothing for the high school?
Katrina?
Is there a sport going on on the football field right now?
Track?
Track. No, I'm talking about the grass part.
Track.
Yeah, I know that, but. Do you use a ground?
Lacrosse used to use the Fitch football field, but they don't anymore. I believe they work at, they practice and play their games at aquatic planes.
Yep.
Girls lacrosse plays at Fitch Middle. And boys soccer plays at Fitch Middle. Girls soccer, drawing a blank where they play right now. But I know girls field hockey plays on the Fitch baseball field, and it's not equipped for field hockey.
So, Mike, thank you, Dan. My question is, what type of maintenance normally happens in the spring so that it's prepared for the fall?
Parks and Rec does the maintenance on the football field for us.
Oh, okay.
They mow it. They also do the reseeding, fertilizing, that sort of thing, yes.
Okay. Rita?
But there are track. I mean, that's where you do the long jump, the broad jump, the shot put. It's all done on that field. So it is being used in the spring.
Shot put is used?
Well, shot put is down for there.
Yeah.
But you still need that whole track area.
The only, there's nothing specifically going on on the football field itself.
Not the high jump, not the pit?
The high jump is used off to the side, behind the goalpost. There's like, there's this little area where there's some track.
But it's still the grassy center is being used at track meets?
No. The hundred yard, end zone to end zone, none of it is being used?
None, they don't do the long jump anymore there?
The long jump is off to the side, which is towards, closer to the sidelines, which is closer to the shaft.
But I mean, if you were gonna reseed, you'd be reseeding a lot of it, right?
If, yes.
What's unsafe? This goes to my ignorance about the sport mostly. But what's unsafe about the field at the moment? I mean, does it need to be grasped, does it need seeding? Does it need to be, does it have holes? Like, has divots occurred in it? What is supposed, so the kids will turn their ankles?
Basically, we'll have to look into that.
Right.
We have not had the Park and Rec people say that it's unsafe.
Okay. Because, I mean, it's so plain, it's grassy. I'd be happy to buy $50 worth of grassy.
But that might be a really good conversation for the liaison to have, is to have about the safety of the football field.
I have a question. Did I just find out the two of the words are wrong from Fitch Middle School?
Yes.
Did I just see that? Well, it used to say Fitch Middle School. Now it just says Fitch?
Oh, really?
I just noticed it. That's why I asked. I could be wrong. It may have been gone for a year, but I think, I think it was just...
The town, the public works department is working on the building, so.
Any more questions about the CIP? So what I hear us moving forward is, is that when Dr. Grineer and I come up with our plan for the RTM in our budget presentation, that we will do a historical and current perspective on the CIPs and to see if the RTM can kind of hear and listen and think long and hard thoughts about the need for some of those capital improvement projects. And that I also see us in the long term, and so I guess I put the long term before I put the short term, Jay, which is, once again, getting CIPs back into the finance and facilities, kind of see which ones kind of make it through for you, and then let's have it make sure that it gets into that liaison committee so that the RTM and the town council can have thoughts about that.
Yeah, I just, I, how many years have we been asking for the re-crowning?
I think they had horses and buggies.
Yeah, no, I...
We've been asking many years for asbestos, that's for sure. We also have a gym issue, the foreign gym we had on our CIP. And of course, Mary Morrison Parking Lot predates me, so at least...
Well, the crowning of the field also predates you.
And the problems in the gym at the high school.
Right. So, and I guess to, you know, not that I want to, I also understand how hard it is for the town council and the RTM to sort of hold the whole town in their viewpoint in terms of seeing all the different perspectives and so. But I think that if we can begin to sort of really, that's a great place for the liaison committee, I think, to chomp on and to get people together on that stuff. Call me Polly Anish, but...
You're bringing up the liaison meeting. Will that mean they'll be starting soon?
Yes. Yes.
Like when?
I don't know. The town council has, Patrice has, the, Patrice has really been, the town council has been working incredibly hard, that they've had to, they're all new outside of Rick, and they've had to go through the budget, and they're voting on the budget today. And Patrice has promised me that that's gonna be one of the first things that gets acted on, I mean, tomorrow. So I, I'm gonna be, I will be a little bit defensive for Patrice's that they've been working really hard.
No, I'm hoping for planning.
Yeah, I bet in May we'll meet.
May? That's my hope. All right. I'm gonna move us on to the committee reports. Policy?
Well, we will have, we will be talking about that.
Because the old business and the new business?
Yes.
Okay. And curriculum, we have not set up yet?
We have not, but I'm gonna get together with Mrs. Austin and some sense of...
And I believe the same thing with the finance and facilities. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And LEARN?
LEARN is ongoing. So at our last meeting, a week ago, Thursday, I believe, there was a, the Director of Student Support Services at LEARN, Bridget Gordon-Hickey, gave a wonderful presentation about everything, like the history of their student support services and brought it all the way forward, and how everyone is looking forward to the, when it all comes to center in New London. Hopefully, it won't be probably till November that the new facility at Bethel Synagogue will be open. And that'll be a facility that will range from kindergarten through age 21. And there's also a proposal, very strongly recommended by New London and Waterford LEARN Board representatives to explore a comprehensive regional transportation for not only special education, but also regular education, where if LEARN could possibly somehow coordinate bus companies and busing. I don't know, I know Groton, we're locked into a five-year contract, and other districts are too, but they'd like to plan, and they may just start with special education, which would be great. What I thought was interesting, the Waterford representative mentioned that they used to use curtain for their transportation, and they found out that they saved $90,000 by buying their own vans and using their vans for transportation of special education, children with special needs. So I just thought it was something that maybe we should think about sometime in the future. I didn't realize, and they keep realizing savings. And I think they've owned these vans for about four years now. So it's just a thought that we might want to explore.
Remember how much we paid them?
It's a lot. But we were also supposed to get a quote from LEARN, because you need to have, at least have one bid and another bid, and, you know, have some type of competition. And I believe the business managers have been talking about that at LEARN also, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I don't know, I haven't seen that yet. Have you gotten the bid from LEARN for our transportation, or?
No, we haven't received it yet. We talked to them, they weren't able to provide the number of vans that we needed to move the kids at this point.
Not even some of them, because it's...
Yeah, no, they're just getting numbers from the president.
Okay. And then, you know, really thinking about maybe purchasing our own vans, since we have such a large special education population.
I'll just give you my personal footnote.
Yeah.
Of course, you hire all those bus drivers, they become your employees.
Right.
And all the fixing of those vans and the purchasing of those vans.
And the upkeep.
But we had the opportunity in a former district, we...
To do that?
We got rid of it, because it's a big deal.
It is a big deal. I think it depends on your population.
Yeah, yeah. And lots of vehicles, and lots of maintenance of vehicles.
Right.
Now you have to hire maintenance personnel.
And some bus companies provide that service also.
Yeah, right, right.
Jay?
Which raises the question, have we asked STA to look at taking over some of those routes? And they do some of it anyway.
STA does all of our in-town, they're the smaller buses.
Right.
We have like 17 or 18 of those. So they do all the in-town. It's just the...
The longer distances.
The longer, outside of town.
And they're not interested in bidding? That's really not their business?
We could pursue that. But many of those are in individual cars, and I don't know that STA has that. We could ask.
But I'm hoping that someday, with Ledgerd and Stonington, our surrounding towns, that we do have some regional transportation for our special needs students, especially now that so many will be all going to the same place in New London.
Good point.
Katrina?
I'm gonna phrase this. There's a new special ed school being built in New London or renovated into New London. How does, what population will that be targeted towards? Because I thought that there was a law about a least restrictive environment for special ed students? So is it a certain population?
No, you could, because these are students that are not in...
So WERN has facilities in many places. And when children are so severely impacted by their disability, there are facilities at Eastlime Schools and Waterford Schools and so forth. So what WERN is trying to do when they bought Bethel Synagogue, they've converted into, what's it called, Southeastern Connecticut, something Center, I think, Werning Center.
So basically, they just took all of their programs that are throughout the districts that they service?
They're self-contained programs.
And they're putting them all into one building?
Still gonna be self-contained.
So it's a self-contained home?
That's it. Oh, yeah, self-contained, probably.
It is the kiddos that cannot be serviced in their own district. That LEARN then has developed a special program. And instead of having one in Eastlime and Groton and Waterford or whatever, they're moving it all into that building.
They rent space all over the place, so now they won't have to do that.
Do we have any students?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And they'll also have the program there where, I know we've had a few students go when a child needs to go for, to be diagnosed with, for three months at a time, to see what is the best placement for that child. Sometimes they come back to the district, other times they're outplaced, or... So they're gonna be running that program there also.
Can we get more information on that?
Sure.
Sure.
About the outplace programs?
Maybe Rita, in her next board notes, would you be willing to talk about that?
Yeah. How this is gonna affect us? How many students?
You know, I'll invite Denise here next time, and we'll just kind of give an overview of our outplacement.
It's not gonna change.
Because you said yes. We have students that would...
Oh, yeah, we do, yeah.
I'm just curious, and how much it's gonna cost and stuff like that?
It's not gonna cost anymore. They just won't have to be traveling as far.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we have a Groton student that's attending the LEARN program at Lily B. Haynes, which is an elementary school that they rent space from, instead of going to Eastlime, they're gonna go to New London. So it's the same program, and they're just putting it there.
Okay.
So when Ken and I talked about outplacement tuition, he referred to a student who recently moved in. That's what we're talking about. But we could give an overview of that, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know more about the type of...
Services.
Services that will be offered.
Sure, we could do that.
Thank you. But the least restrictive still doesn't apply, huh?
It doesn't apply.
Yeah, that is, that is the least restrictive environment.
It's considered the least restrictive.
Sorry. Let's not have 9,000 people sitting on the seat.
I'm sorry, I'm listening to Mike. I'm sorry, Michael.
So let me just finish.
Yes.
Because we have had one too many conversations. So least restrictive environment for some kids is in a self-contained classroom.
Okay.
So it is sort of, what is the least that they can be constricted by? Is sort of what is what people, you know, so a neurotypical student can be in a classroom of 23 to 24 other students and be fine. There's other kids whose disability require them to be the smaller, and then there's even some who even require their least restrictive environment is one or two.
So this is more intensive than our...
Extremely intense, that's right.
Than our classrooms?
Yes.
At Charles Burnham?
Yes, yes.
So this is more needy than those?
If a child was not seated in our behavior academy... If a child was not seated in our Behavior Academy program...
Yeah.
LEARN is a potential...
You is right, we have said...
Okay, so our behavior program could potentially be relocated to the new building? Or, we're gonna keep our kids?
Yes, we're gonna keep our kids, and only those most severe...
Who are right now in outplacement are eligible to go to LEARN?
That's it.
Okay.
So it's a kid that no longer can be serviced within the district? So they can't be in the academy program, they can't be in the self-contained classroom and whatever, that their needs are way above that. And through the PBT process, they've been identified as an out-district placement, and LEARN is one of the many options.
Okay, that's the part I missed, the outplacement.
Yes.
Now I completely understand, you don't need to do anything.
Got it. Gretchen, did you have a question?
I think it was answered, the medically fragile, they're too fragile to be in our own system. They'll also be...
Possibly, I don't know if they do, I don't know if they do medically, high medically need facilities. Anything else from LEARN? Is there, do you have trails or scholarship, Gretchen, to address?
It's called the Ocean Avenue Learning Center. That's what it's gonna be called, Ocean Avenue Learning Center. Took me a while to remember that.
All right, I'm gonna move us along. The next item is action items. It's the consent agenda, which is all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. And all points of clarification will be allowed. So all those, all those in favor, thank you. Rita first made the first motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Between one of those two ladies. Do I have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstain, motion has so carried. We are now gonna move on to old business. Katrina?
Yeah.
Would you be willing to read the first motion on the old business?
Yes.
And Gretchen, I'm gonna have you read the second motion after Katrina.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as a second reading of policy 5113, attendance.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Pick the one, two. All right, so this is our second, our second part of this, look at the attendance. Do we have any questions? Sue, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, just that the law had changed so that the part that you see that was taken out about the superintendent filing a written complaint to Superior Court no longer happens. So in lieu of that, we have added that the school administration will refer to this tiered intervention document, which we have included in the regulations. And it's quite a comprehensive document that gives administrators many ways to address in a tiered fashion absenteeism.
Any further discussion?
I have a question though. I'm seriously considering abstaining from this. I want to know if the regulation... My concerns are with the regulation. So, if the motion is for the policy... And I have concerns about the reservations.
The regulation?
The regulations.
Reservations about the regulations.
That's what I've got. Do you get my question?
I think your question is, is that if you have, if you have concerns about the regulation, can you vote and approve of the policy? I think we are just doing the policy, is that correct?
Well, technically, it is not, it isn't, it isn't the agenda.
Say what?
You're right, 5113, the P is there, but we don't say anything in the ear in the old business. We don't have anything on it.
Here's my concern. And all of this goes together?
All of this goes together. When I was at a meeting, I heard our, thank you. When I was at a meeting, I heard our principals say that. The first thing that they said about just school in general is that they had high expectations for all students. The next thing that they said was that they're going to give pizza parties for children who show up at school. Now how that is a high expectation is beyond me. So, as I looked at these, I want to recognize the hard work that went into these, the tiered series of interventions by the people who worked on it. I understand that and I recognize it. However, I know more about this than you think I do. Get your little self to school. Get yourself to school, or else. That's mine. Okay?
Okay.
Is that...
That's it.
All right. Any other discussion about the policy of 5113? Gretchen?
Where it says number two, under excused absences.
Are you on the regulation?
I'm on the regulation.
Yeah?
And tell us where you are.
She said number two, excuse absences.
Number two, first page, number two, under excused absences. A court appearance. I think we need to define whether it's a positive court appearance, like you're being adopted, or a negative court appearance.
No.
I don't think we should be rewarding children for getting, doing bad things by allowing that to be an excused absence.
I, I don't think...
It's, they do something wrong and we're gonna say, oh, that's okay.
No, I don't necessarily think that what that means is that if they don't, if they are under a court obligation to go because they have misdemeanor, if they miss court, then lots of bad things can happen.
I agree.
So I think that an excused absence is defined.
They shouldn't be doing the wrong thing in the first place, so we shouldn't be excusing the absence.
Unfortunately, a moralistic thing. Katrina?
Did Lee just say we're talking, we are approving the policy?
No, all I said was, if you look at the agenda for today, it said on the old business, we're doing the possible second reading of P 5113, when actually, the other one is R 5113.
So what mechanism is in place if there is an issue with a regulation? And what type of controls do we have over that?
The board is legally bound to approve policy. Regulation, however, is the way that the district takes the policy and implements it. However, with our wonderful board policy committee, we've been trying to do that at the same time. So we're taking a look at the regulations at the same time and then sending it out to other people, you know, administrators, teachers, who would have a say-so so that they can add to it. Or we'll ask them to come to one of our meetings to help us with it.
And I think that we have actually talked about the tiered, we've done it. I think this is the third time we've talked about it. All I'm saying is...
And that's the only difference in the regulation, is that we've added this tiered intervention to it. The other, it has been on record, both the policy and the regulation, since...
I got it, yeah. I think, I think...
1993.
Right, and I think your question is a little bit more general in terms of what do we do if there's a regulation and we don't, as a board member, we're not approving of how the regulation, which is what Andrea brought up. And I think, I think that Mike, does it go to the superintendent in terms of the regulation?
Right.
Technically, it probably does. But I'm willing to sort of, like, I don't even know where we would look at that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because there's two issues. And I'm wondering, what's the mechanism for resolving those issues?
I think we bring it back to the policy, we talk about it. We solicit the problems and we'll come back and revise it.
Well, and I think what Susan said was, policy is under our purview, regulations are not.
Right.
Regulations are how the policies are implemented on a day-to-day basis in the schools.
Hi, Gret.
From what I understand, from what I remember, the reason we included the regulation when the policy came to the board to have its votes was for informational purposes only, not for debate.
Right.
Has that changed?
No, but I would say that this tiered intervention, remember, if you recall, that it was underneath a whole safety committee group that's been working on that. And because the law had changed, we needed to do something instead of what was done in the past with the superintendent, you know. So, and they presented to you the tiered intervention plan. And so that then became an addendum to the regulation.
I also believe that this is also part of the Alliance School District, is it not? In terms of our attendance?
It is. That we have to do some things.
Right.
And I don't know about the pizza party, but I do know that kids do get recognized in our school for having perfect, near-perfect attendance, even month to month. And I think that makes a difference for kids, that you acknowledge when, I mean, it's been a tough flu season, so I don't know if it's that easy to do even in central office, you know, to have perfect attendance.
Right.
But certainly, I think, looking at it in a positive vantage point, they don't have to get something but to be recognized for being in school.
Right. I don't want us continue to be lauded at the point. I think that tonight, we're voting on the policy. I think that we need to kind of take a look at if the regulation is in our purview. I just think that we're gonna start spinning on this question.
Could I just add, from looking back not that long, to dealing with this sort of thing every day? I would have loved to have this in place. Because administrators and teachers spend so much time trying to sort out individual cases with no framework to work from. This is really a step forward.
And great for nine schools to do the same thing.
Absolutely.
Rosemary, who has been patiently waiting?
Regulations are not under our purview. The only reason we went over this was because we had people coming in from the Safety Committee presenting the tiered way to deal with this, because, especially because of the Alliance. And so it's, we're not actually voting on that, but we need to include it so that everybody is aware of, especially because of the Alliance issue.
Okay.
And we can't differentiate between a good and a bad court appearance? That's not our purview either.
Okay.
No, I think there's a real distinction.
All right, so I'm gonna move us on. So any further discussion? All those in favor of to approve the second reading of the policy P 5113, the attendance policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Two oppose? Any abstentions? Motion has carried. Gretchen, can you please read the motion for number two, please? Andrea and Gretchen? Are we in number two or... Just the motion, please, not the top part?
On your own business. I'm sorry.
Number two of the motion?
Right there. To approve the second reading of policy 5131 Conduct.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the second reading of policy P 5131 Conduct, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has so carried. Jane, would you be willing to read number three, please?
Sure, to approve the removal of policy P 5114.1, use of physical force that will be replaced with policy P 5223.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Can we, is there any discussion on this?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, which is to approve the removal of policy P 5144-1, use of physical force that will be replaced with policy P 5223, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion so carries. Rita, would you please be willing to read the first item under new business, the motion, please?
Here we go. To recognize May 8, 2018, as a National Teacher Day and May 6 through 12, 2018, as National Teacher Appreciation Week. And to direct the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter of appreciation to the teachers.
Can I have a second, please? Rosemary has seconded. Any discussion? Thank you very much for the teachers of all the hard work that you do. We totally adore what you guys are doing.
Thank you for signing all those, Mike.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to recognize May 8, 2018, as a National Teacher Day and May 6 through 12, 2018, as National Teacher Appreciation Week? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstain? Motion so carries. Rosemary, would you be, please be willing to read the motion under number business two?
I would be honored. The motion is to recognize May 9, 2018, as National School Nurse Day and May 6 through 12, 2018, as National School Nurse Week. And to direct the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter of appreciation to the nurses.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Are you taking sides? Okay. Any discussion? Once again, thank you, nurses.
Thank you, and thank you again, Mike.
To recognize, so all those in favor, hearing no other discussion? To hear no other discussion, to recognize May 9 as a National School Nurse Day and May 6 through 12, 2018, as National School Nurse Week? All those, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain? Motion has so carried. Lee, would you please be willing to read the motion?
I will indeed. To recognize April 25, 2018, as Administrative Professionals' Day and April 22 to 28, 2018, as Administrative Professionals' Week. And to direct the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter of appreciation to the Administrative Professionals.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Rosemary? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to recognize April 25, 2018, as Administrative Professional Day and April 22 to the 28, 2018, as Administrative Professional Week? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. Jay, would you please be willing to read number four motion, please?
I move we establish June 22, 2018, as the final day of school for students and June 25, 2018, as a professional development day for teachers.
Can I have a second?
A second?
Rita wanted to do one. Can we have any discussion? So this is what was discussed at a special committee of the whole meeting right before we went into a meeting. I can't remember when that was. Committee of the whole. Committee of the whole. And that was because we were at that point where we had to make sure that we could set it in case there was another inclement weather. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to establish June 22 as the final day of school for students and June 25 as a professional development day? This is both in the year 2018. Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. All right, Jay, do you have any letters or communications and comments?
Well, I did attend the food service vendor sale at Fitch. That was written up very eloquently today by our high-flying correspondent in the day. And I believe they raised around 3,000 for the fund for students who are having difficulty paying their lunch balances. And I guess the only other thing I did was the RTM Education Committee, I think that was a marathon, three and a half hour meeting a couple weeks ago.
Oh God, that was beautiful.
Rosemary? I also went to the food service vendor and enjoyed that a great deal. And we went to the public hearing that we had at the RTM. And I also spoke to the students at the, at Fitch for the NBA, which is not the National Basketball Association. They were all short, about my profession of being a nurse. And I've also, will be going and talking to them later about being a forensic nurse, so. It was delightful, I had a great time.
Oh, great. Lee?
I just want to talk about two things that are about to happen. Mike, I think you're going to be honored at the Norwich Inn.
I am.
And I'm going there because a lot of my book, public people are gonna be there, so I'm looking forward to that. You well deserve it.
And what is it for?
It's just a person who's done wonderful things for the community, basically.
Against domestic violence. The men standing up against the domestic violence.
Safe futures.
Safe future, the former women, the better.
Safe future, the former women in the center.
And the other is that for anyone who has not yet seen The Little Pink House, it turns out that the woman, Susan, Suzette Kay Lou, lives in Groton there, and she's the one that was writ, well, that's what the movie and the book are about. They're going to show, do it again on May fifth at the garden.
Thank you very much.
For anybody who would like to see it.
Thank you.
I, I, after reading the article in the, the paper, I didn't realize that we had five hundred and thirty-five students that had, were, are falling short on their accounts, and I was wondering, we talked about it last year, but if we need, what exactly is our policy, and if we need to refer this to policy, to have a written policy? What, what, how do we help these, these children without having our wonderful food service employees do all the work of fundraising for these students? So I think some of it should fall on the Board of Education, and so I, I'd like to know what, what we need to do, whether we're gonna have, brought up a committee of the whole, or how we can help them. And I was also, was wondering if Jay could speak to, when he had the director of the Groton Public Libraries, he sent an email today that I thought was extremely interesting, that Betty Ann Ryder would like to have, and if you could just talk about that a minute, what you had written to us.
Sure. I was over at the library for the opening, it was open house for the local history room, and I ran into Betty Ann, and apparently there's a program in Chicago, I believe, where the public library is opening its collection so students can sort of reserve books at the school and have them delivered. I think it uses the old kinetic car system to get the books around, they call it deliver-it now or something.
Yeah.
So she wants to talk to the, the board and administration about facilitating that kind of a use of her collection.
Great. I know that last year, actually, I had a conversation with the librarian, the youth librarian, and she was talking about the exact same thing, and I think that all the stuff that happened in the past year, I think that that got on, so I'm so glad that the two of you guys connected to get that.
Yes.
I have that coming to a committee of the whole near you.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
That's kinda clever, I have to admit. Coming to a committee of the whole near you. Sorry, you can have this one more time. All right, I feel good about that.
Could, we started that end, 'cause Jane and I went to something, and I can't remember exactly what it was called, so I'm gonna let, can we do that?
We double trouble, no. Mystic Rotary last year paid seven hundred dollars to Groton Schools to enable the kids to be part of an interactive program with Salt Marsh Opera. So we went, of course, I, I went, they said, Jane, you wanna do this? Yeah, I do. And I said to Cap, why don't you come with me? And we did. It was nearly a hundred sixth graders in a large music room, and I thought, this could be deadly, but it's gonna be very good or not so good. It was the most wonderful morning we both spent in a long time. Simon Holt, the director, was there, very strong British accent, older man. Charlie, we don't know his full name, Charlie was there. He was a young man, a recent recipient, I'm sure, of a degree in vocal performance. The kids related to both very well. Charlie looked like them, young, button-down shirt, shirt hanging out over their pants, and just down-to-earth. He, he drew his music from his iPhone, and the kids were just immediately intrigued. He talked with them about the difference in a musical and an opera, merely microphones, what the music was like. It was always heavy, it was not rap, nothing like that, but it told a story. And he would play snippets for them and say, oh, what do you think was going on here? And they were taking all kinds of risks, they were right on the money without doubt. Every kid was tuned in. What do you think about this guy after hearing some part of an opera? He was bad, one would say. He was really smug, really got it. So we thoroughly enjoyed it.
And where was this?
It was, it was West Side.
We didn't even know.
And they had every, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, without exception. Thank Rotary for this, we could not have done it without their support. They were building a new opera, kids involved, and it was going to be called Jack and Jill and the Happening Hill. Jack and Jill had climbed up a hill, they got separated, and didn't know, what do you do in a case like that? And some kids, one from Stonington wrote music for this, one from Preston wrote music. It was a kid's performance, and if that occurred today, I couldn't, we couldn't get there. But what a wonderful, wonderful day it was.
Oh, great, thank you. Jane, I'll just let you continue, and then I'll, do you have anything else from communication besides the Salt Marsh?
No, that was good.
Okay. Andrea, do you have anything?
I went, I went to the RTM education meeting, and I, I'm sorry, I won't be able to go to your dinner because I have a commitment with one of our scholars at Ledgerd High School. She invited me to a dinner there.
Oh, how cool is that? Katrina?
The only thing I'll add to, to Jane's was that Charlie sang. And no microphone or anything, and it just filled, and the kid, I mean, they said-
I wanna go to Martha's.
Is that, is, yeah, it was, um, is he, Charlie said, am I a bass? And he said, no, you're a tenor. They, he taught them that in the short time they were there, the different ranges of music.
Oh, how cool. Gretchen, I wasn't overstepping you, I, I went to Katrina, and then Jane took over, and then I want Gretchen, me and Katrina to finish. So Gretchen, do you have anything?
Um, as always, I'm very proud of my niece and nephew, not Mal, I felt this, aluminum kids. My niece and nephew, I'd like to congratulate the entire team, but point out especially Liam and Juliana and their efforts.
Great.
So how did they do?
They did very well, and Liam is a freshman, so-
It's not your, not your family members, but how did the aluminum Falcon team do?
They were, last I checked, they had come in first, I believe.
District champions.
They were.
They're district champions.
District champions, they were headed out to Detroit.
And I think they were going to Detroit.
Wednesday, they go to Detroit, if I'm not mistaken.
If I'm following my sister-in-law's messages, I am on the money.
Okay. Anything else?
Closely following the RTM Education Committee, because they won't let go, they, they won't stop calling.
All right.
I've had a lot of conversations about the RTM, how they're gonna do the budget and everything, and, you know, it's all speculation. But I wanted to thank Susan for something. There's a new group in town, Sandy Hook Promise, southeastern Connecticut.
Right.
And through Sandy Hook Promise, there are some programs in schools regarding mental health and all other stuff. And we've been working with Susan for, I don't know, a month and a half, two months or something, and we got the official word that they're gonna go ahead with the two programs, and we're presenting the curriculum next week, or later this week. We don't have a meeting yet. So that also, when I was poking around, getting ready to do this, that, there's a statistic, and unfortunately, I don't, I don't have it, that it will help with attendance.
That sounds like that would be a really good thing, to come to the committee of the whole near you. So that we can, so that we can hear this.
Let me introduce, get through, introducing the curriculum to the staff first. If I can do that, I'll let, I'll tell you all about it.
Okay, anything else in terms of, I, I kinda report on the same, I've been at the, some of the same meetings with you and having lots of phone calls and emails in regard to the budget and, and stuff, so I, I can share that. We have future meeting dates. I, I do have a question for Dr. Grunier, is that our, if my memory serves me correctly, our May board meeting is at Fitch High School?
Yes.
And that's our, that's our major one where we get to do the awards of the teachers and the, and the friends in, of the school, so it's a really big night. So just to remind people that our May meeting is gonna be at the Fitch High School. We're gonna be done. Okay, so anything else, so he doesn't have to change the tape?
Just that, there is a G E A, A G S A D O E Lea-ation Committee in May, the end of May, I don't have the date, but it should be on the calendar.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. There's a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We're done. It's eight oh three. Two hours. Thanks to volunteer.